...to which the applicant responded on a pro basis being 29.
It amounts to really, at this point, a proposed construction and storage building and parking area. As you know, the site is already developed with an existing office building and parking lot. We are not increasing the size of that existing office building, and that existing Tilcon building is to remain, it's going to be renovated and repurposed. And there is work going on right now at the site that's pursuant to a validly issued building and sewer purpose that are going on with respect to the renovation of that existing office building. Now, we're here tonight and have been here for pride means for what should be reviewed and discussion of our site plan and SEACRA. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, at the beginning of the meeting, we would hope that the comments tonight and comments of the board would focus on those issues of site plan and SEACRA and not going into areas that have no bearing on site plan or SEACRA. Now, the issues that we've heard, again, this is our fifth public hearing, we've heard issues about water quality, other issues, and, you know, we seem to press lately with regard to SUEZ. We have a whole team back here to my left, your right, from SUEZ, that's here tonight to answer any questions that anybody in the public has about water quality, metering, billing, any, anything that is other than site, plan, or SEACRA, they are all here tonight to address that if anyone would like to do that this evening. That's it. We are here to listen to additional public comment this evening and other comments that the board may have. We will proceed as you see fit. Our team is here to answer any questions that you may have. And again, may your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. We will sit and listen to the public comment, and at the end, we would like to answer the program. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to give the brother, Lynn, the background.
The leaders of Rockland County here represent a lot of people in the back here. You know, everything's pretty much been said on this issue at multiple public hearings. You guys have heard it all. So, you know, and it seems like you guys are, seem to be on the target. Exactly what I wanted to say was, it's pretty much imperative when a, when a project that is a no-brainer in terms of, it benefits the public, it improves the area, it improves the property that it's dealing with, you know, it's, it's in the best interest of us all. It's just imperative to focus on that issue at all. It's just, unfortunately, it seems that some of the other meetings got pushed to the side for the simple fact that there's some other agendas with other issues for the same petition. And, you know, I, I think it was getting off the subject of what we were talking, what you, you know, talked about to start with. So, it's imperative that we have these kind of projects that are a no-brainer, they don't require any variances, and they're beneficial to everybody involved when it's all said and done. In order just to provide the jobs for the people of this county, I mean, like I said, the people that I represent are Rockland County only, and SUEZ is a major employer for us, and they pay union wages, union benefits based upon, you know, there's no regulation for them to do that. So, you know, I appreciate you guys hearing us out, and we appreciate both sides of the issue. I just expect people to stick to the site plan itself and, you know, bring up those issues and not some of the stuff that we've seen on some of the social media pages. You know, sticking SUEZ with everything under the sun, that really is necessarily their fault. So, I just assume, hope that it really sticks to what we're talking about, and keep in mind that this county needs to build smartly what we need to build, and we need to keep people employed, and the whole thing doesn't work without. So, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Which is right behind where all this work is being done. First thing is, is that my father worked for New York State Truck Park in the 60s, and I worked for Martin Marietta in the 70s. And there is not a lot of people that worked up there during this time, as they're saying hundreds of people worked up there. There was never. Towards the end, in 2018, and maybe back a little further, there was only 35 people working here at that time. And as far as I can remember, with everything, only a pickup truck was allowed up there. And a mason dumped the plow at night when it snowed. No big vehicles were ever allowed up there from Tilcon, that I know is a fact. And it as living right there, 100 feet from the buffer, I don't need to hear trucks all hours at night going out for calls, because you know there's a 24/7 operation. Water main breaks, fire hydrants, whatever it may be. And there's no reason. I have no problem in having an office up there, as it is an office, it always was an office up there. The problem I have is bringing all the vehicles up there. There's plenty of commercial property in Rockland County that that could go. I'm all right with the, with the offices, but not bringing all that stuff up there and listening to it all hours at night, 24/7. And Jay Fletcher Kramer is outsourced as a work for SUEZ. Is their stuff going to be brought up there as well? I live there. Nobody else in here has the backyard to this, and I don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Justin Sweet. I speak to you tonight as a citizen of this town. I live here in a city with my wife and children. I want to thank you, the planning board, for their careful consideration in this matter. And thank all the concerned citizens who came out tonight to express their opinions. The town has given this project careful consideration. The single most concerning aspect of the project, on-site fuel storage, has been withdrawn. Multiple departments of the town have carefully scrutinized the project and will continue to do so throughout the remaining process. And I urge you to adopt all of the steps, suggestions for this project. I would urge the planning board to continue to hold SUEZ to the highest scrutiny regarding the environmental impacts of the project. I would also urge everyone in attendance to consider that this project also represents good-paying union jobs. In my opinion, the town has done their due diligence. Let's move this project forward, implement the appropriate environmental safeguards, and produce good-paying union jobs for our local laborers. Thank you.
With the chairman's permission...
Move the mic, please.
With the chairman's permission, I would like to start by asking if we can show a short video, bear a short video. I'd love the planning board and the audience to take the moment to watch a video of a rainstorm in my neighborhood.
It's relevant to the issue, so...
Very relevant.
Okay.
They say the SUEZ headquarters property not long after the last planning board meeting, where we, where we closed with a deadlock on requiring an environmental study under SEACRA before construction could commence. If there's anyone on the planning board unsure about how they should vote tonight, consider this video and what's going into your drinking water.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Good jobs.
Good union jobs.
Bulldozers, trucks, and lots of construction workers have been part of the landscape in our neighborhood on a project you, the planning board, have still not approved or even decided if additional environmental scrutiny needs to be applied. And in the meantime, SUEZ continues to violate our neighborhood with their existing construction. SUEZ cut down trees without a permit claiming the trees were less than eight inches in diameter, which does not require a permit, but many were larger. SUEZ began land disturbance work before they were granted a permit. SUEZ continues to not follow regulations when it comes to stabilizing dirt piles and silt fences for our environmental safety, as shown by the SWIP report and the summary attached by the Rockland Environmental Laws letter. SUEZ threatens to have a major impact on the truck traffic in our neighborhood, which will not only create a nuisance in a quiet residential community, it will also increase accidents. I'm familiar with the accident report. I read it on your site. I'm not a mathematician, but I counted 70 accidents over the last three years.
For a minute.
It's your chance, as a governing body, to make the right choice for our drinking water. This is your chance to not let runoff and pollution continue down the rolling hills of the SUEZ property into our reservoir.
Suez and Shapirov.
Before I start, I'm an attorney...
Before you start, I would like to put it to the record, we received your...
As the attorney who's representing the community, I'm asking for a little bit more time. I'm not going to read that into the record, but I want to point out certain things in it, because it is an in-depth legal brief on why you are required to conduct an EIS, because there are environmental issues that have to be considered here. And they've been raised by the public and by yourselves and by the EAF. And if you don't do that, the appellate court has repeatedly overturned boards that have not taken the hard look at environmental issues that have potential damage. We're not talking about just damage to a local, localized area. We're talking about damage to the drinking water supply of all of Rockland County with this particular site. And the construction that's being asked by SUEZ is enormous on this site. It's a large impact on the site. They're, they want to install a new 65 by 170, 170-foot building, which is approximately 11,000 square feet, plus they want to install a new parking lot, which is another approximately 50,000 square feet. They're turning a lot of the site into curable, and what you just saw was runoff from the driveway as it is today. You just heard from your engineer that the SWIP report that they've provided you doesn't have the proper testing done yet. What you, as a board, have a requirement under the law, under SEACRA, to conduct an EIS. If you don't, if you choose not to do that, you have to make a finding that there are no potential environmental issues here, that there's no potential traffic issues or planning to park massive trucks. And you saw, you saw pictures of them, you have the list of all the trucks. Those trucks are oil, diesel, gasoline trucks. They're planning to service some of those trucks on that site. Those trucks are going to be parked there, the runoff from those trucks is going to come running down that driveway right into our drinking water supply, that you would think they would care about, because they're the ones supplying it, and they're profiting off of our drinking water supply. The other thing that you have to consider is the way they behave recently. And the SWIP reports that you have in front of you show that they have repeatedly not done the most basic, simple things that everyone else is required to do. Silt fencing. They have never properly installed their silt fencing. There have been report after report after report saying, "Do it," and haven't done it. They are not responsive. They are not good corporate citizens. They're not the guy for actions. You have to require the EIS because of what they've done. They've left piles of dirt that have repeatedly been told to them by Booker Associates in the SWIP report, "Remove this." They haven't removed it, month after month after month. It's still there. And that's what's running off into our water, our drinking water supply. And we are going to end up, all of Rockland County is going to end up paying more. I'm starting representing the community, and most, most, most towns allow attorneys to keep a little bit longer.
We, we accept that, that as a principle.
Okay, I'm almost done.
My indoor presentation, so that, that could be no question. You did hear, I hope, as did the rest of the public, from...
Existing site consists of 23,600 square foot of buildings, an FAR of .02 on 1,180,000 square feet lot, with associated parking and access driveway from Old Mill Road. Site was previously occupied by Tilcon as offices. His proposed action consists of the addition of one building 170 by 65 feet of 11,050 square feet for storage of materials and outside parking for maintenance vehicles. Additional parking is proposed around the existing building for employees and visitors. Approximately seven acres of land will be disturbed for the construction of the project. Action types specified under the provisions of SEACRA at 6 NYCRR, Part 617-4 for Type 1 actions, and Part 617.5 for Type 2 actions respectively. Any action not specifically listed in those sections is classified as surprise, unlisted. Part 617-4B6 defines one of the Type 1 actions. Activities other than the construction of residential facilities that neither exceed any of the following thresholds, or the expansion of existing non-residential facilities by more than 50% of any of the following thresholds. And those six thresholds are listed as a project or action that involves a physical alteration of 10 acres, project or action that would use ground to surface water in excess of 2 million gallons per day, parking for 500 vehicles in a city, town, or village having a population of 150,000 persons or less, parking for 1,000 vehicles in a city, town, or village having a population of more than 150,000 people, and a city, town, or village having a population of 150,000 persons or less, a facility with more than 100,000 square feet of gross floor area. And the final one, in a city, town, or village having a population of more than 150,000 persons, a facility with more than 240,000 square feet of gross floor area. As indicated previously, this action is going to add 11,050 square feet to the existing total building area for a new total of 34,650 square feet. Total disturbance area is approximately seven acres. So, this proposed action triggers 617-4B6I, a project or action that involves the physical alteration of 10 acres, where the threshold is cut to 50% of five acres. It's well below the threshold of B, 617-4B6, I'm sorry, bad sensation here, five, which would allow 50,000 square feet of new building floor area. Now, this comes into all of the apparent contradictions in SEACRA regulations. This is a 27-acre site. Were this site undeveloped, or if the existing facility had been removed, the disturbance area to construct would be below the 10-acre threshold for site disturbance, and the total building area which could be constructed without triggering a Type 1 action classification would be 100,000 square feet. That's 65,000 square feet greater than what's being proposed for the total project. In that event, the action would be an unlisted action, and there would be no discussion of the EIS. Throughout the commentary this evening, there have been a number of statements made with regard to not identifying potential impacts. There have been a number of potential significant impacts that it might identify for this project. We listed them in Part 2 several more. They've been responded to by the applicant with the appropriate technical studies. Those studies have been reviewed either by your consultants or the town staff. I've been in this business since 1973, on and off. SEACRA didn't exist when I started the land development. The issues at hand, this board has reviewed on a number of projects and treated them all the same, whether they've been unlisted or whether they've been Type 1. There are other projects that, again, because they were projects on open vacant land that had more disturbance, that were unlisted action. This board took the same hard look at those projects, they're taking the same hard look on this project. With regards to a number of the statements that were made with regards to, you have to identify one potential adverse impact in order to require an EIS. What was left out of those statements was the very operative word, "significant." That's what has to be identified, is that the project may have a significant adverse environmental impact.
May.
These studies have been reviewed. All of the, the technical information is in place for this application. I understand the emotion. There were a couple of statements that were made tonight with regards to, this is our source, source of water supply. It's a portion of the source of the water supply. Absolutely.
My waters.
It's not the total water supply in the county. I know at least a half dozen wells within the town. All right? I've been a technical advisor to this board for 24 years. This board has reviewed many, many projects with similar characteristics to this one. They've always taken a hard look. For the, for the public to come in at this point in time on this project, when probably at least 60 to 65% of the town of Clarkstown is drainage tributary to Lake The Forest, this board is reviewing a number of projects within that watershed, and has given them all consideration with regards to the protection of the water supply. That's it.
All right, Mr. Lex, this whole field, you don't find any legal issues. Now, this is a recitation on 617... Correct. Thank you. Mr. Lex, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the issue that was raised several times regarding the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan inspection forms. So, just to be clear, as part of the permit that was issued by our department, I think Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan was required. All of the measures that were required under that plan were implemented by the applicant. And as a, as a requirement of the plan, weekly inspections took place, and that's how these inspection forms were generated. So, I know an issue was made regarding, regarding some silt fence. There's numerous inspection reports that indicate that the silt fence was not installed in accordance with specifications. There was accumulation of sediment. Just to put it in perspective, this is, was a large site. There's hundreds of feet of silt fence in place at any given time on this site. So, anytime the inspector would go out and notice that any portion of silt fence was dislodged, not, not installed properly, that was noted as being deficient on the inspection form. But it's not to say that the entire installation was defective. So, so that's an important note to make, because I felt that what was being conveyed at certain points was that they, the, the, SUEZ was in complete disregard of the SWIP. That's not correct. There were three separate occasions where I reviewed the inspection reports and noticed that there was some issues that had not been addressed immediately by SUEZ. I, in turn, contacted their engineer and advised them that they needed to get into compliance immediately. They were responsive to those requests, and the, the issues were rectified in a, in a, you know, immediately. So, all of the measures that were required under the SWIP were put into place. Yes, there were, as there typically is on construction sites, you're going to have instances, as was reflected in the video that Ms. Monroe played. That particular instance, there was a large storm, a section of the silt fence blew, blew out, and that, so the hood portion of the disturbed area is on a fairly steeped bank, and so you had some sediment that did wash down off the site and into the road. So, so, you know, those things happen. The question is, were they rectified in a timely manner? And they were, because I was the one reviewing the reports, and I was the one that notified the engineer, and I can tell you from personal experience going out and doing these site inspections that those issues were rectified. So, I just wanted to make that, that issue for clarification on that.
Mr. Lex, do you have anything?
I just wanted to speak to a couple of points that were made by some of the members of the public. Just, and there was a comment with regards to TAC and the technical advisory, and we are advisory to the planning board, and we are, we do advise applicants that come before us. So, we have our, our recommendations, they are recommendations to the, to the applicant, and if they can apply those recommendations to their plans or not. So, there was a, I think there was a point made with regards to the, the, the liking of the roadway. That was a suggestion, right? We are advisory. I just want to make one other point with regards to SEACRA and honorable laborers. I think Mr. Lex had covered it. But with regards to determination of significance, a lot of emphasis has been placed on there being no adverse environmental impacts for you to be able to determine that no EIS is necessary. The other half of that is that the identified adverse impacts will not be significant. That's the other half of this. And I think the board should also realize, and I'm actually referring to the letter that the board received, from Mr. Shapirov. There's a lot of case law that's in here, and I don't claim to be an attorney, but one of the important aspects, I was looking at some of the cases, and it was important in one of these cases with regards to coming up with that determination of significance, that the board does not do conclusory statements, that they don't jump to a conclusion basically that's unsupported by, and I'll quote, "empirical," unsupported by empirical or experimental data, scientific authorities, or any explanatory information will not suffice as a reasoned elaboration for a determination of significance or nonsignificance. The point is, we have to base things on studies and the facts. And that's what the board needs to look, look at. There's a whole body of evidence that they have in front of them, and that is part of taking the hard look. The hard look is taken now. Whether the board wants to determine whether this needs an EIS or not, you have quite a bit of information in front of you to make that decision, and that's what you have to weigh. It's not just that EIS that would bring out that information. That information is in front of you to make that decision. And again, I would just urge the board, it should not be simply a feeling or something that's, that's conclusory, it's something based on the data.
That judgment's a real...
How about an EIS study?
It's not a factual-based judgment.
So, don't come here saying things about me or my fellow board members like we're in the pocket of anybody. Philip Day of Town is in nobody's pocket. I'm here to look at the facts and read what's going on, and then I'll make my determination. So, I appreciate those comments. Leave them all.
Thank you for taking me seriously.
Any other board members? At this point? We've had, what, four or five, what, the public hearings? I think we've covered, well, we have taken a hard look through our consultants, our professional staff, who does this day after day after day, and have been doing it for months, if not years, actually, on this matter. So, we have taken what amounts to the hard look, so-called. And if that's the case, I feel that we have finally exhausted the public hearings at this point as far as any further comment. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the public hearing was closed. Which then brings us to the main issue, and that is determination of significance, whether or not to acquire a environmental impact statement, or a positive declaration, or a negative declaration, which will allow us to proceed for the review of the preliminary stage of this application. At this point, I will ask if there's any motion for a positive. Anybody offering a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for a positive.
Second motion. Second by Mr. Cordero. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. So, what do we have? Roll call. Uh, the one by one. How many ayes?
We have a roll call.
Three of you?
Roll call.
Huh? Roll call. Roll call. Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Undero?
Yes.
Mr. Strigman?
Yes.
Bertolino?
No.
I vote no. We've gone to the determination of significance for a negative declaration. Who would move it?
I'd like to make a motion for a negative declaration.
Mr. Bertolino? Who seconds it?
My second.
By Mr. Vicatano. Any discussion? All those in favor? Roll call. Mr. Katz?
No.
Mr. Cordero?
No.
Mr. Vicatano?
Yes.
Mr. Strigman?
No.
Bertolino?
Yes.
All right. And I vote yes. Which means we are tied 3 to 3, and both motions fail. So, we cannot proceed further.
We need a seven person.
At this time.
Where's Chairman Heim? He's with the...
We need a seven person.
To the Electrical Brotherhood.
Just for the record, I understand that the chairman is not here this evening. And I know he has participated in this application on at least two, perhaps three occasions. I know he wasn't here for the 31st. So, given that this has now occurred twice, both at the July meeting and tonight with respect to votes being tied, what is the reason, if the board knows, as to why the chairman has now decided not to participate in meetings? I mean, again, we understand that he was participating for the first couple of public hearings, and we haven't heard whether or not, as to why he decided to participate no longer. And I just wanted to know if that was in the record or will be made clear to the applicant? Because we have been here, if you count the TAC up until today, we've been here for about a year and three months.
And the public would know as well.
And also, I think it's fair for the applicant, we need to have movement on this, yes or no? Again, it's just not fair at this point to enter the time. That's why you have seven members on this board. So, again, I submit to you that this is in due process. It's just not the right result, and it needs to be continued further because there needs to be a seventh member in order to decide this matter. Thank you.
I would indicate at this time that it is not likely that the chairman, Mr. Gilbert Heim, will be participating in any future meetings on this matter.
Why not?
If that be the case, would we stand at the six members that are here present?
Why not?
Do you know why?
What's the reason?
I don't know what else to suggest to you. And it's not my position to suggest anything to you.
No, no suggestion. I appreciate what you're saying. We agree with the applicant.
Y'all have your opportunity.
I'd like to make a suggestion that the applicant just agree to do a limited EIS. And let's get past this. You understand. We agree with them. We want to know why the chairman is not here.
You heard the board.
Has Mr. Heim publicly recused himself? He's told me that he's not publicly recused himself.
I think it would conflict the basis for the Electrical Brotherhood.
We had public comment in that tonight.